Good afternoon. Welcome to our San Angelo Independent School Board, Board of Trustees Meeting for June 19th, 2017. My name is Max Parker. I'm the Vice President of our Board. Our President Lanny Layman is out of town, and so I'll be handling or moderating the meeting tonight. We have a quorum. Everyone's here except Lanny. So with that said, I'm going to ask Stan White, who's our pastor at the Sierra Vista United Methodist Church, to lead us in our invocation.
Thank you so much. I would invite you, if you would, to bow your hearts as we pray. Gracious and loving God, Lord, we gather here on this wonderful afternoon with much to be thankful for. Lord, we give you thanks for the promise and possibility of the day that we've been enjoying, as well as for the blessings that await us in the days to come. We thank you for the opportunities that come with living and participating in such a beautiful, caring community like San Angelo. And, Lord, we especially thank you for each and every child in our community and the potential and the gifts that you have placed within them. Gracious God, as we gather tonight, we lift up these leaders, as well as the people, the programs, the resources that they have been charged with. We ask that you would allow your Holy Spirit to fall upon them in every conversation and decision that is made this evening. Lord, bless them and provide divine guidance for the work and deliberation that lays before them this day. We ask all this in the precious and powerful name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Stan. We don't have any elementary students here today to lead us in our pledge, so if everybody will stand, I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States and Texas flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Let me read a script that we usually, that sets out our procedures for each meeting. We appreciate everyone being here tonight, especially any of those that are watching the videotape of this that will be on our access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate all of you and your interest in our students. All items that we'll be discussing tonight have already been discussed at a pre-agenda meeting that we had last week. All items have been posted as required by state law. We're here as Board of Trustees members to set goals, to listen to reports from our superintendent and other administrators, to approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public, but it's not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we do have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask any audience members if they would like to make any comments on an agenda item. Anyone wishing to make comments on any item should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome all of you to tonight's meeting and to thank you for taking time to join us this meeting. We appreciate your interest in activities or students and the business of our district. With that in mind, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie Highsmith for some recognitions.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the Board. It is our great privilege this evening to take the time to recognize the Sierra Vista United Methodist Church and their Student Bed Project. The church started this program about four years ago. They had adopted Altaloma Elementary School and were seeing what they might be able to do to meet the needs of students, parents, teachers. And it came to be known that so many of the students, not just at that campus, but at campuses across town, were not having a bed to be able to sleep in, mostly sleeping on the floor, sometimes on a couch or other arrangement. But many of these students did not have their own personal beds. So this very motivated group of people got going on this idea, and I'm not sure our viewing audience can see, but here at the front of our room, we have a sample bed, and this is exactly what the students who are receiving beds get. So it's not just a mattress in a frame, but also sheets, pillow, and comforter. So, once they came to know of greater need reaching across the city, this became a citywide effort on the part of this church. And those who have headed this up are Charlie Oliphant. Charlie, please come forward. Shawn Floyd. And then it just so happens that the man who led our invocation is their pastor. So Pastor White, please join them as well. What we really found to be absolutely remarkable about all this is that now, they've finished their fourth year in distributing these beds to students. And what is truly amazing is that they have given out 780 of these beds to students, elementary school students, who did not have beds. And we believe that is just truly remarkable. It shows your servant hearts, and it shows that you truly have compassion for these students. We have no doubt that they're sleeping better and then able to do better as they face the tasks each day at school and other challenges that they may face in their lives. It's just great to have a bed. So, Dr. Detloff, would you come forward and help us award the certificate to these folks? And we just really cannot even begin to thank you all enough for what you have done for the students at the school you adopted, but then other students across San Angelo who have had such great need, and this is truly a need that has been met. If you all will, yes. If you all will come forward. Yes. Oh, I do, too. Yes, once again, that is 780 beds, complete with pillows, sheets, comforters, for students in our city at the elementary school level who have not had beds to sleep in. So you have created such a positive impact with this project, such a great outcome, and just truly, you've made such a tremendous difference in the lives of these students. And if I have the information correct, you're willing to continue this project? Yes. Great. Thank you all so very much. Uh-huh. They've just finished their fourth year. Uh-huh. That is right. And thank you all. We look forward to your help in the future. Thank you so much. Another round of applause, please, for these very dedicated church members.
While they're coming around, I'll say a few comments. Ms. Oliphant, who's in front, was a teacher in San Angelo Independent School District for many years. I also wanted to say, I was at a fundraiser at Sierra Vista a few months ago, and Shawn and her husband Rodney were very instrumental in that, and there were many, many thousands of dollars that were raised that night, one of which was for the bed initiative. So I do appreciate Sierra Vista and all that the Floyd family has done, and Shirley and Pastor White have done for this. And it's just, it's amazing to know we've had, unfortunately, that we have that many students that need beds, but it kind of brings you to the reality that we've got a lot of students that are really, under circumstances, that most of us, it was Father's Day yesterday, that you hate to think that so many of our students are in that situation, but it's also a huge tribute to our teachers and administrators that we are, and to those students that they're doing so well in school under those circumstances. Thank you guys again for all you do.
Yes, thank you again so much. Mr. Parker, also with us this evening to be recognized are our instructors from both of our junior ROTC detachments and some of our cadet, student cadet leaders from both schools. They're here this evening because continuing their strong tradition, they have, once again, both units have received the Distinguished Unit Award for the past school year. We have a letter from Air Force Headquarters from Colonel Bobby Woods stating that the schools have both earned the Distinguished Unit Award. The awards recognize personal growth and accomplishments of the cadets, contributions of instructors as mentors, and the support of the school and local community. While there are great, many wonderful things that go on in ROTC units, really across, around the world, these students represent the best of the best of the units worldwide, and that's in writing from Air Force Headquarters. So cadets, instructors, we commend you this evening for your outstanding accomplishments. And I'd like to call on Major Regina Harris from Lakeview ROTC. She'll be introducing those who are with her and giving us a little bit of information about their school year that's just ended. Major Harris?
Thank you, Ms. Highsmith. Good evening. How are y'all? From Lakeview, we've brought with us Esme Contreras, Gabriel McLester, come on up, Destiny Flores, Ricardo Ramos, Leslie Fernandez, and our Corps Commander for the Fall, David Moreno. These are our top, and you can go ahead and please take the center. These are our top cadets for the fall semester coming, and they were very enthusiastic about coming out because this award, they worked very hard for. We have over 6,000 community service hours, about 34 community service hours per cadet, and this is the smallest our corps has been in the 20 years that I've been here. We ended this semester with 138 cadets, which is really small for us. So for us to have accomplished these numbers is tremendous. We did two blood drives, and 45 color guards, marched in three parades. I can't brag about the cadets enough, except to tell you that these are the best of the best of the best, quite exceptional.
And Dr. Detloff, would you come back to our podium? And we have a certificate, actually, it's from the Air Force, but we're presenting it to you here this evening. And I'll ask Dr. Detloff to come do that and shake hands with you all, and we'll get a photo. Just, thank you. Yes, oh, yes, we would love for them. We are presenting this evening the Certificate of Achievement. These cadets and instructors are receiving their certificate from the Air Force, Certificate of Achievement for Distinguished Unit Award for 2016-2017. Please join me in a round of applause. has earned a similar award. It's much hard work represented by both of these units in order to receive this. And Major Carney, Chris Carney, would you come forward along with your cadets, and we'll let you introduce them to us and tell about great things you all did this year as well. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm going to do a little bit different than I've done in the past, because I like to make my kids brief. So I have brought my top two cadets. I think Major Harris said this is the first year we've ever had our top two cadets be two females. So I did not know that. I've only been four years in the school out of the 24. I know it is the first year that it's been, since I've been there, it's normally been one male and one female. And they've rotated who's the top and who's second. Okay? But now we have two females. Our year has been really, really busy. We've, Sergeant Marquez had some health problems this year. He had to have quadruple bypass surgery. He's had a few strokes. So he's had an up and down year. He's doing really well now. Chief Prince, well, she's off vacation. She was in Hawaii and then in Florida. So I'm not sure where she's at right now, but she's somewhere not in San Angelo. So I'm going to introduce, first, I'm going to have Cadet Colonel Natalia Carrillo. She'll say her name is Natalie Carrillo. She mispronounces it. And Cadet Taylor Watkins. And they're going to tell you about what we did this year instead of me doing it, because it is a cadet-led program.
And I'm Cadet Colonel Carrillo, and our unit has had a total of 7,708 community service hours. We've earned the Silver Star Community Service with Excellence Award, which is the top 5% of Air Force Junior ROTC units that they can earn it, based on the average hours of every cadet that they participate in. And keep in mind, this award has only been offered for three years, and we've earned it every year. We've also participated in the 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony. We provided spirit teams for all the central football games. We supported the Central High School Band. We've hosted the Pancake Breakfast for teachers and staff, as well as custodian appreciation dinners. The NHS Induction Ceremony, the ASU ROTC Detachment 847 Flag Detail. And we've participated in local events and organizations, like the Trinity Lutheran Church Oktoberfest, the First Community Federal Credit Union Annual Board Member Dinner, the Chick-fil-A Grand Opening. We did the color guard for that. And then for the Children's Miracle Network, we raised money in our unit by flights, as much as we could.
I'm Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Watkins. We've done 50-plus color guards. We do it at the district convocation before school starts at the Coliseum. We do multiple central events, like we do color guards for the pep rallies for every home football game. I like to do those. The middle and elementary schools, Lee and Glenn, and we've also done, like, Santa Rita and Bowie. We've done local community events, like the West Texas Death Olympics and the Children's Fair. And our ROTC marched in the Memorial Day Parade in Washington, DC, which Caddio went to. We participated in three parades, the Veterans Day Parade, the rodeo parade, and the Runnels County Veteran Affairs Veterans Day Parade. We took a trip to Enchanted Rock, where we hiked for 14 miles in remembrance of the Baton Death March, and we camped, like, in the middle of nowhere. It was fun. And we lead a cadet leadership camp at Howard Payne University in Brownwood. This past year, we had 33 different schools from across Texas go, and a school from Oklahoma. And we basically just teach them leadership skills, and we bring kids from other schools together to learn things from their different cores, and they take it home to their other cores and change it up and make it all better.
Thank you all for that report. And could we have you come forward, please? And Dr. Detloff will be presenting the certificate to you. Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps Certificate of Recognition, Distinguished Unit Award, 2016-2017. Thank you. Yes, a round of applause, please, Central High School. Thank you. Congratulations. Oh, thank you. Mr. Parker, that concludes our recognitions this evening.
Thank you very much, Jamie.
Thank you.
At this time, as I mentioned in our comments earlier, anyone that would like to give public comments on topics that are not on our agenda should come forward. Ms. Doyle had filled out a sheet that she wanted to give some comments, so welcome, Charlotte.
Good evening, Board. I'm Charlotte Doyle, Director of Technology. But tonight, I'm here representing the Lions Clubs here in San Angelo, and I just want to say thank you to our school board for allowing the Lions to use the Glenn Middle School property, as well as the stadium for the recent Balloon Fest. I've been the president for Lady Lions Club for the last two years and on the Balloon Fest Committee, and it was a great event. If you got a chance to go out, that's wonderful. I know Amy was there helping out. She was serving pancakes and going busy, busy. And so it was a great event for our community, for families. It not only was their hot air balloons, unfortunately, they didn't get to fly because of the winds, but they did get to glow. And there was a 1K, 5K, 5K, 1K walk-run car show, lots of kids' activities, food trucks, lots of activities for families, both Friday night and all day Saturday. Even though it was hot, there was a lot of people who came out, so much so that the local police on Friday evening even issued a NICSAL alert that said, "If you're not going to Balloon Fest, avoid the area, because there's a lot of traffic." And so that was a great thing, and it was great to see a lot of people out on our grass lawn area, just to have some great family time. And y'all's allowing us to use that facility was key to the event, because it's such a great open space that is safe for balloonists to use and to land. And so I spoke with many of the pilots, and they were thrilled to come back to San Angelo and said that it had been since 1994, since some of them had been here. So thank you again, on behalf of all of the Lions Clubs here in San Angelo. It was definitely a great event. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. On our agenda next is approval of minutes. We had minutes from our May 8th, 2017 Special Finance Pre-Agenda Meeting, our, from May 16th, our Special Meeting to Canvas the Election, May 18th, 2017, our Facility Workshop, and May 22nd, 2017, our Regular Board Meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. Mr. Gallegos has made a motion, and it was seconded by several, but I'll, Mr. Dindell's closest to me, so Mr. Dindell is the second. Is there any other board discussion regarding that item? Any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say the same. The motion passes. We now have reports. I don't know, I don't remember from our pre-agenda workshop just exactly who's wanted to address us. Mr. Bright, was there anything about your student enrollment report last day of school that you wanted to comment on publicly tonight?
Basically, our enrollment kind of stabilized as the year went on, and it didn't drop as much as we had anticipated. So I think we're going to end up the year in good shape financially.
Yes. And what was the, what do you think the bottom, towards the end, I know it, as school first started, it was, we were up around the 100 mark, but I think it went much further down as the year went on. Is that correct?
It's our mid-40s, I think, is where we ended.
All right. Good. Anything to mention about our six weeks' daily average?
Attendance was down just a small percentage, but like I said, overall, financially, we're going to be in good shape, based on enrollment figures and the attendance rates.
Thank you. Dr. Detloff, is there anything with the Partnership of Goodfellow Air Force Base that we need to mention tonight?
Yes, sir.
Oh, there she is. Good.
Good evening, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the Board's community. The May 20th Operation Kids Event was held on Goodfellow Air Force Base, and it was to provide related deployment experience to children, parents, community elementary schools, and various leadership. This increased awareness and understanding was the unique stressors for military children and families, and it was to put them through deployed events that a deployed member would go through. It also gives children a chance to visualize and process the likeliness of what a deployment experience is and visualize that location, to be able to participate in the potential experience that a parent or a military member might go through, bringing this to the forefront for them, that children are able to process the deployment, or a mock deployment, and ask questions to those real military experts right then and there. Because Operation Kids is an interactive experience, children are better able to understand that deployment process. Those experiences that those military members go through, our kids are able to see that. Adding 50 children from Fannin Elementary and San Jacinto Elementary School, it was able to enhance our program even more and develop that bond of community relation. Children and parents were up very early in the morning to be transported to the base by SAISD Transportation, which we were very appreciative of. Once they were through that gate, they were directed to the Vance Deployment Center, where they received their rations, breakfast, and a briefing from our Goodfellow Wing Training Commander, Colonel Downs. After that, they were done with their briefings, and they were sent with their parents out to their deployed location, which is the Army and Marine side of the base. There, they were able to engage in M'n enemy and obstacle course tactics, paintball and grenade ranges, static displays of equipment, military working dogs, moulage, and many other hands-on events that kept their interests. Goodfellow will be hosting our next Operation Kids on the 4th of November, where we will be recruiting 3rd through 5th graders from Bel Air, Holloman, Austin, and Altaloma Elementary Schools. We would like to see 25 students from each campus be able to attend. Our overall goal is to ensure that all students in SAISD get onto the base and be able to participate in Operation Kids. This is for them to be able to gain a better understanding of deployments and what our military families go through. We thank you and the Board for your community and your support throughout this event and for our partnership.
Thank you. Teresa, just for our record, because I don't think you said it, would you state your name and who you- name and who you, and what your role is in this?
Yes, sir. I'm Teresa Goodwin, and I'm the School Liaison Officer for Goodfellow Air Force Base, and I work with the Community Relations Department as far as making sure that we have everything in line, and Shelley is also a POC for this special event for Operation Kids.
Thank you very much, both of you, for helping this.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming back this week. You gave us the report last week. Thank you for coming back so we can be seen by our people on, on Channel 4. Thanks.
May I add to that?
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Detloff.
Thank you, Mr. Parker and Ms. Goodwin. Also wanted to add a, a recent celebration that we will provide a detailed report on in July or August, but Colonel Downs recently notified us over the weekend that the Department of Defense has now funded a complete grant for Starbase. So Starbase is, focuses on STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math, and we will, in partnership with Goodfellow Air Force Base, we will have approximately 1,200 5th graders that will be onsite at Goodfellow, learning the latest in nanotechnology, submersibles, coding, for all sorts of things that are way over my pay grade. And we are delighted about this endeavor. I believe we're one of the only bases in Texas that has this, and we are very excited about this endeavor, and we will provide more details at a later date. Anybody want to add to that? Okay, so that's an exciting Goodfellow report. Thank you. More details soon.
Thank you, Dr. Detloff. And we have an update on our SAISD Federal and State Policies and Procedures Manual with Dean Munn.
Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board, in accordance with school board policy, BP Local, the superintendent and administrative staff are responsible for developing and enforcing procedures for the operation of the district. These procedures constitute the administrative regulations of the district and consist of guidelines, handbooks, manuals, forms, and other documents defining standard operating procedures. The superintendent shall approve this state and federal grants manual on an annual basis or as appropriate if federal, state, and local changes in regulations or policy warrant immediate changes. Administrative guidelines are subject to board review. Under EDGAR, that's the Education Department General Administrative Regulations, all districts must implement internal controls for the administration of their federal and grant and state grants. EDGAR regulations cover all the compliance measures that federal program directors and grant managers must meet for the following type activities: financial management, application process, procurement, inventory management, time and effort, accountability, allowability, record retention, program oversight, audit resolutions. There are a few changes to, to this year's manual that are worthy of noting. Under ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, it, we're replacing all the verbiage from our NCLB No Child Left Behind wording to the new regulation. So those changes have been made. Procurement policies and procedures have been completely aligned to EDGAR requirements. We had a two-year waiver on that, so we've had two years grace period to become aligned, and now we are fully aligned thanks to the hard work of Ricky Martinez and also Dr. Bright's office. The comparability update, EHBD legal and local, was also added to match the policy verbiage. So those are the big changes in the EDGAR policy manual. So any questions?
Any other questions? We appreciate you coming back also, Mr. Munn, because I know you gave us this update last week, but we thought it would be important for our public to hear it again, so I appreciate you being here.
My pleasure, sir.
We now have our consent items. We have consent items A through K. These are items that we considered last week and put to vote on as a group without taking a lot of time. And if there's no, I'm going to read through these, and if any board member wants to pull any of these off to consider separately, fine. Otherwise, I'll be looking for a motion to approve all the items as a group. Item A is donations, which you see on our board there that are listed by the persons that have made generous donations to our school district. B is quarterly investment report ending May 31, 2017. C is an audit engagement letter from Richard Webb, CPA, PLC. D, consider bids for the Child Nutrition Department for the 2017-2018 school year produce in high volume. E, consider bids for the Child Nutrition Department for the 2017-18 school year frozen foods and staples. F, consider bid number 17-009 for letter jackets. G, consider TASB Board Policy Update 107. H, consider TASB Board Policy Update 108. I, ratify administration's action in sale of properties. J, review board operating procedures and standards. And K, consider delicate and alternate to delicate for the TASB Convention. Is there anybody who wants to pull any of those off to consider separately? If not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve.
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Dindel and seconded by Mr. Gallegos. Is there any other board discussion on any of these items? Is there any public comment on any of the items? All in favor say aye. All opposed say the same. Motion passes. Item nine, consider bills accounts and financial statements for May 2017.
Move for approval.
I'll second.
Okay. There's been a motion by Mr. Dindel, seconded by Mr. Gallegos. Is there any other board comment on this? Any public comment?
Mr. Parker, just a note to the viewing public that we've reviewed all these in our pre-agenda meeting, and as, as a further note to the public, if you'd like to review any of the reports, if you'd go to our website, saisd.org, click on the Subtitle District tab, and over on the right-hand column, there's a column called Financial Transparency. All these reports, in addition to, a lot of good data is contained within that, within that tab.
Thank you, Mr. Dindel. I think I've asked for public comment. All in favor say aye. All opposed say the same. Item passes. Item 10, consider proposed amendment for district official budget for our general There's been a motion by Mr. Dindel, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Any other board discussion? Any public comment on this? All in favor say aye. All opposed say the same. Motion passes. Item 11 is consider the superintendent's recommendations for personnel for the school I think we got a list of all those, and our, and we discussed that at our pre-agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the, where are we? The recommendations personnel for school year 2017 and 2018.
I'll second.
Thank you. Amy, you seconded. Thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Gallegos and a second by Ms. Mizell Flint to approve. Is there any other board discussion on this? Any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say the same. Motion passes. Mr. Munn is back to, on item 12, which is consider 2017-2018 District Improvement Plan.
Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, members of the board, our district site-based committee met on April 6, and again on May 18, in order to conduct a comprehensive needs assessment and to develop the district's improvement plan. The needs assessment process included identification of strengths, needs, and problem statements. The committee then prioritized the identified problems. Although all developed problem statements are included in the needs assessment, they are not all addressed in the 17-18 District Improvement Plan as, due to the prioritization of those needs. Once the needs assessment was complete, we reviewed the current district improvement plan to determine where revision was necessary to address high priority issues and changes to the accountability system. I'll quickly review the goals for 17-18, which have not been changed, the objectives for each, and highlight a few strategies. Goal one is to provide student achievement at the highest levels. Objective one, by May 18, May 2018, SAISD, 70% of all students, race, ethnicity groups, and economically disadvantaged students will meet or exceed grade level expectations in all subject areas. This was a slight revision, but is not a new objective. Some of the strategies associated with that are to emphasize a focus on high-quality instruction, student engagement, and curriculum development and alignment. Objective two, by May 2018, special education and English language learner performance on state assessments will increase by 5% as compared to 2017 performance. This objective, we combined special education and English language learner objectives for one objective. Some of the strategies include expanding teacher capacity to address the needs of the two populations and provision of tools and resources. Objective three, by May 2018, an at-risk student performance on the state assessment will close performance gaps to less than 30% in each subject area as compared to their non-at-risk peers. This is a continued objective. It's a must-include strategies and plans to address the needs of at-risk students and justify the funding of state compensatory education. Some of the strategies include interventions, accelerated instruction, summer school, pays, and Carver to mention a few. Objective four is to maintain less than 0.5% dropout rate in middle school and 2% in high school annually for 2017 and 2018. This is an unchanged objective. We typically do very well in this area, but it is mandatory that we address it in our district improvement plan. Some of the strategies include provision of credit recovery opportunities and use of at-risk coordinators and school service workers to remove barriers in school readiness and attendance. Goal number two, students graduate from San Angelo ISD college and career-ready. Objective one, student performance at grade level and master's grade level will increase for all students and all sub-populations by 5% annually. This is a revised objective due to new language and an accountability system. Some of the strategies include teacher training and lesson design, as well as maintenance of district writing initiative with a focus on higher-level performance. Objective two, 85% of students graduating in 2018 will be college and career-ready graduates. No change to this objective, and the strategies include promotion of career in technology, advanced, and dual-credit education, and career counseling. Objective three, increase the percentage of students graduating under the Foundation High School program with an endorsement for all students, white and Hispanic by 5% each year for the next two years, and African-American by 10% each year for the next three years. It's a minor revision due to absolution of recommended and distinguished graduation plans. Now, we're focused on a foundation plan with endorsements. Some of the strategies include provision of stu, of teachers and advanced classes funded by high school allotment and continued promotion of endorsements beginning in middle school. Goal three, maintain fiscal responsibility and design, implement a facilities plan that addresses current and future needs of the district in order to fulfill the vision, mission, beliefs, and goals adopted by the board. Objective one, a balanced budget will be adopted that supports the vision, mission, and beliefs of the district while ensuring the achievement of goals of the district facilities plan used to sustain and maintain adequate facilities. Some of the strategies include staff training, campus-level support, conducting a facilities assessment, and developing a long-range plan. Goal four is improve communication between stakeholders and the district. Objective one, 75% of eligible guardians will participate in three meaningful learning activities during the school year, such as teachers' conference, ARD meetings, annual review meetings, PTA, PTO functions, special programs, volunteering. We revised this initially to make it measurable, and Ms. Mizell Flint asked a great question last week. She said, "It's high." So we are going back to the drawing board, and we're trying to get some more feedback on that. When you asked the question, and I reflected on it, I thought, well, first of all, you asked, "What is our current rate?" I don't know. So that led me to think, well, how are we going to measure this down the line? So we need to revisit that. So I appreciate the question. Helps take a deeper dive on that. Some of the strategies will include increasing opportunities for parent and volunteer involvement, providing parents training and use of the Home Access Center, and ensuring parents receive communication in their home language. A lot of those strategies develop out of the feedback we get in the site-based decision-making process, and some of our community members and parents that participate in that process help us out a lot as far as recognizing some opportunities for improvement. Goal five, secure and retain effective staff that are reflective of and responsive to the district's student body. Objective one, 100% of teachers will be state-certified, and teacher aides will be highly qualified. There's no change to this objective. Some of the strategies include recruitment and activities, and assistance with additional certification and endorsements. Objective two, the district will be able to hire and retain quality staff by offering competitive regional salaries and high-quality opportunities for personal targeted group, growth based on student needs. Strategies include incentives for bilingual and ESL certification, mentoring programs for our new teachers and principals, and quality professional development. Objective three, 100% of campus and district leaders will receive targeted professional development in order to build instructional leadership capacity. Some strategies include sustained intensive professional development, aspiring administrators' academy, and providing networking opportunities for instructional coaches. And our last goal, sustain a safe and secure environment. Objective one is to optimize the learning environment and support the instructional program of the district with the development and implementation of a district-wide safety plan. Strategies include required training specific to disability harassment, dating violence, bullying, and sexual abuse, staff training in the positive behavioral intervention strategies, and addressing recommendations from a recent safety audit. Objective two, reduce the number of discretionary placements to DAEP by 5%. This was another objective that I think Mr. Lehman asked some great questions about this one last week, and upon further review, this strategy was kind of birthed out of EBMAS, Performance-Based Monitoring System, where they identified that we, actually, we had an elevated level of sped, special education placements in ISS. So the strategy is not truly reflective of what that issue was. So again, we're revisiting that and determining if this is two separate things that we need to address and what the appropriate percentage improvement would be. So again, thank you for the questions. Strategies include provision of staff development and discipline management and early intervention strategies, behavior modification classes for students attending the DAP to reduce repeat offenses, and extending the Capturing Kids Hartz program. We've worked diligently the last two years to streamline the district improvement plan under the philosophy that if you're, that fewer objectives and strategies are meaning, more meaningful, and it's certainly easier to monitor and measure. It's a living document, subject to change, as additional data, and as we dig deeper into some of the great questions you've asked, as we collect more data and the needs are identified. We have data that rolls in all year long, impacts this plan. Any questions?
Any questions, board members?
If not, I would ask that you approve our plan, knowing that it is a fluid document.
Thank you, Mr. Munn.
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion that we approve administration's recommendation for district improvement plan as been, as, as been outlined by Mr. Munn.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dindel. Thank you. Any other board discussion on this? Any public discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say the same. Motion passes. Our next item is number seven, is number 13, and I'm not sure if this is still going to be on our agenda or not, but it has to do with bid number 17-011 Lou Gehrig Hall renovation plan, part two. It's my understanding that that might be tabled, but Mr. Bright, I don't see, Dr. Bright had mentioned that. Do you know, Dr. Detloff?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
As y'all are well aware, we started planning for the Lou Gehrig dressing room renovations probably over a year and a half ago, and we were just now getting ready to wrap up Phase One, should be ready by August 1st, and we were planning to move forward to Phase Two. Well, in that year and a half time, there's been turnover in staff, just, things have changed over time, and our coaches asked for us to reevaluate whether we want to move forward on Phase Two and basically eliminate a current dressing room and turn it into a meeting room. And the new coaching staff was having doubts about whether that would be the best move. So we asked Coach McCauley to go over and visit with the coaching staff at Central, and they came back with the recommendation that they would like to keep the current dressing room and not move forward to Phase Two at this time. Now, down the road, we're probably going to need to look at possibly renovating that dressing room and creating a meeting room, but just not in that space. And so our recommendation right now is to go ahead and table this. I believe y'all have a term, time indefinite, or something like that, and we will reevaluate where we want to go with that as fall rolls around this year, if that would be all right.
Thank you, Dr. Bright. Do we, I don't remember, do we have to vote to table something?
Um, says yes.
Martha says yes? There she is. All right, then we need a motion to table this to a time indefinite time.
I'll make a motion to table, let me get my bid here, make a motion to table the bid for Phase Two of Lou Gehrig Hall renovation, which is part two.
Motion by Mr. Gallegos and seconded by Mr. Dindel to table bid number 17-011, Lou Gehrig Hall renovations, part two, to a time indefinite in the future. Any other board discussion on this? If not, is there any public comment on this? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say the same. Motion passes.
I guess, Jeff, so y'all will be looking at this in the fall? Just start, kind of starting over and just kind of?
Yes, there's basically starting over, and we need to go ahead and move into the new renovated spaces, that everybody gets settled down, and then we can start looking at planning again.
Okay, all right, yeah, that'll work.
Okay. I don't think we want to let it go forever.
Yeah.
It needs to be worked on. If we're going to keep it as a dressing room, it needs to be renovated.
Renovated as a dressing room, much like the other ones were, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, at this time, Dr. Detloff has said that we need to go into executive session real, very quickly on real property, 551.074, for just a few minutes, and then we'll come back and complete our agenda items. All right, we're back from closed session. There was no action taken, no votes were taken either. We've got one more item on our agenda, which is consider copier contract upgrade. Dr. Bright?
Sir, as y'all are aware, we have one more year left on a five-year contract with curbo copiers with an option to extend an additional year, and we discussed in pre-agenda that we had every intention to do that until curbos came up and offered just an incredible, put an offer on the table that was hard to not look at. But we kind of feel rushed with the decision at this point, and so what we'd like to do is postpone any action on this item until the July board meeting, and then come back to you and possibly have another recommendation. As well, give us, it will give us some more time to possibly study other options and look at some of the local vendors as well. So that's what we'd like to do at this point, is postpone any action on this until July at the earliest.
All right. I'm looking again, see whether we have to vote to postpone it for one more meeting or not.
You can just take the last one. Or you can postpone it. Either way.
Take a vote on it.
No, just take the last one. You can make a motion and take a vote, or we can just say?
All right, then I'll just make that, we'll take no action on this item this month. We'll look at it again next month.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Thank you. That's all the items on our agenda. We have announcements. Our finance pre-agenda workshop next month is July 17th, and our regular board meeting is July 24th. Unless there's any other announcements to be made, the meeting will be adjourned.